Good evening. I would like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Norman Public Schools Board of Education. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Alex Regiers.
Here.
Annette Price.
Here.
Dawn Brockman.
Here.
Tori Collier.
Here.
I would like to invite Mary Bell Dixon, Marley Eichel, and Brooklyn Williams to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join us in saying our pledge of allegiance.
In the United States of America, and in the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have some awards presentations. Would Hallie Wright please get us started with the Oklahoma Bar Association Essay Contest Award?
I'm the principal of Norman High School, and we would like to recognize Ethan Ling. Ethan is not with us here tonight, but Ethan is a ninth grader at Norman High School, and he placed second in the Oklahoma Bar Association's Writing Contest. And so he receives a certificate and $500. So we want to say big congratulations to Ethan.
If we could have Jeanne Gordon come up and present the Oklahoma Seal of Bilitracy.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to help recognize student achievement in world languages by honoring students that have achieved the Oklahoma Seal of Bilitracy. This credential is bestowed by the Oklahoma State Department of Education and recognizes high school students who obtained a high-level proficiency in one or more languages in addition to English. The recognition for attaining bilitracy becomes part of the high school transcript and recognizes the students' readiness for career, college, and engagement as a global citizen. Students, please come forward as your name is called. Riley Jewell. Go ahead. Yeah, come on up. Kenton McKay. Kenton here. There's Kenton. And Zoe Davenport. And is there anyone else in attendance who I did not call? Let's give them a round of applause for this amazing... Family members of these students, thank you so much for your support of the study for world languages and your dedication and encouragement of these outstanding students.
Next are the Fine Arts Awards, presented by Dr. Evelyn Quanza.
Good evening, President, members of the board, Associate Superintendent. Thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize our NPS Fine Arts students and their wonderful achievements at the state level. We will start with visual art. This is an award that is titled "The Oklahoma Education Award for Arts Excellence in Visual Art." We have three students here who've done some beautiful artwork we'd like to recognize. We have Clarice Brewster. Would you please come forward? You might have seen her artwork at our All City Art Show. She's done, including her bag today she's wearing today that was recognized on the state level. And we have Zariah Jones. I don't know if you're here. She RSVP'd. And we also had Elizabeth Yu. Are you here? Okay. Well, go ahead and get that picture. We had another recommendation. Lillian, is that Lillian? Lindley. Lindley, come forward, please. Lindley received the Young Talent in Oklahoma Award. Lindley, it's further down. We're actually going to recognize that award a little later. If you hang out, we're going to take a picture with a bunch of other kiddos in just a little bit. Yes, that's okay. No problem. No worries. All right. Next category. We have a wonderful, long tradition of excellence in speech and debate here in Norman Public Schools. So we are excited once again to celebrate the amazing accomplishments of students either qualifying for Nationals or being top eight in the state. So I've asked Morgan Brown, who is our Norman North Debate Coach and instructor, to be here to actually kind of explain a little bit of these wonderful categories. Wait till you hear. I'm going to call them forward, and she's going to tell you about their categories. So we have here today Finn Brockman.
So Finn actually was a state finalist in a new event offered in the state of Oklahoma called informative speaking.
Finn is getting in place. Can we please have come forward Sullivan Ho? Is Sullivan here today?
So Sullivan is a student at Norman High School, and he is a national qualifier in public forum debate as well as a state finalist in foreign extemporaneous speaking.
Next up. Georgia's not here yet. On her way. Okay. Next up, we have Brogan Jones. Are you here, Brogan? All right, come on up.
Jones, just as a freshman at Norman High School, was a state finalist in Lincoln Douglas Debate as well as a national qualifier in public forum debate.
Anna Jew. All right. And we're going to give her a little bit of time. Georgia Kirk, our reigning state champion. We're going to go to now, do we have Sophia Creft? John Austin Little? Come on up.
John Austin, as a graduating senior, is also a national qualifier in public forum debate as well as a state finalist in domestic extemporaneous speaking and state champion in public forum.
Right, we have Chris Long.
This year was a, not only in program of oral interpretation, but also humorous duet.
Next up, we have Alexander Papa Vassiliou.
Alexander is a national qualifier in public forum debate as well as a champion this year in public forum. And I also have to shout out that he was in finals three out of the four years of his high school career, so.
We have Camilla Kwamebo. Are you here?
Camilla was a state finalist in humorous interpretation.
Bebe Rish.
Was going to Nationals in original oratory. She also finalled in three events this year at state. That would be dramatic duet, informative speaking, and was state champion in foreign extemporaneous speaking.
Eloise Tucker.
Eloise is going to Nationals this year in informative speaking and also attended state this year in foreign extemporaneous speaking.
Okay, did Georgia Kirk make it? Okay, well, congratulations to Georgia. She is our reigning state champion in Lincoln Douglas Debate, which is a really outstanding category. So congratulations to her, and let's get a picture with you as well in there. Many of these students will be headed to Des Moines to compete at Nationals. So we wish them well, and we know they're going to represent NPS wonderfully. Congratulations to you and your parents. Next up, we have students who made it into the All-State Honor Ensembles, OKMEA All-State. We had students who made it into the mixed choir, the All-State Orchestra, the All-State Wind Symphony, and the All-State Symphonic Band category. Here tonight, I'd like to ask to come to be recognized Karen Ronnie Chacon. Chase French, come on down. Ethan Jewell. And Mackenzie McKinney. While they face you, just want to brag on them making it through three rounds of audition. The first is in the region, and then those students move on to the state level. And then the final round is, once they get to the conference, to determine their mastering of the repertoire for the ensemble. So they made it through that very rigorous audition process. Congratulations. Okay, Young Talent in Oklahoma is an award that is given to, is a state level award that is hosted by the University of Oklahoma. Teachers are invited to select 25 art pieces, and these are adjudicated blindly. There are over 800 pieces that were entered into this competition, and it was narrowed down to 200. Norman Public Schools took up 25 of those, I'm sorry, 30 of those seats, 30 total of those seats. And so we'd like to recognize those students. We have RSVP'd, so we'll see who's here. Jackson Alley, Kylie Borden, Clarice Brewster again, come on down. Jasmine Chavez, Leilani Dedan, Amida Epler, Seren Fashion Power, Zariah Jones, Jasmine Chavez, Leilani Dedan, Amida Epler, Seren Fashion Power, Zariah Jones, Nathaniel Lamb, Sierra Mata, Elena Pack, Linlay Ridgway, Greeley York, and Elizabeth Yu. I'm going to go ahead and give you your awards as you are leaving today. Make sure you stop by and pick them up. And congratulations, we know that these students have spent countless hours practicing and honing their craft. So congratulations to all of you and to your parents. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to recognize them.
T.D. O'Hara, please come on down and present the athletic awards.
Good evening, Members of the Board of Education. I'd like to take this time to say thank you for allowing us to recognize our spring sports teams and athletes who had special seasons this past spring. Before we get to that, there are a couple of groups that I would like to recognize because without them tonight wouldn't be possible for the individuals and the teams that are here. That first group is our parents and the support group of our athletes. As anyone knows, in the athletic world, it's up and down as far as roller coaster in season. There are good times and there are times that are challenging. But without the foundation of support that these groups have, these kids have from parents and their support group tonight would not be possible. So parents and support groups of our athletes that are here tonight, please stand so we can recognize you and give you a round of applause. But also like to say thank you for trusting us to take care of your kiddo as well. The next group is our coaches. I feel like that we have a special group of coaches here at NPS, not only in the room tonight, but across our district. I'm a big believer in that saying that a good coach can change the outcome of a game, but a great coach can change the outcome of a life. So I think we have those folks that are here tonight and across our district. So coaches that are in the room tonight, please stand so we can recognize you as well. The last thing, while we all love the gold balls and the championships, I do believe there are other levels of success that define athletic programs. And we had a really good season across the board from both Norman High School and Norman North High School. We had two regional team championships, two area team championships, seven teams that qualified for Class 6A Tournament Meets and/or State Championships, four team state champions, two individual state champions, 10 All-State selections, and 25 All-Conference selections. So let's give those groups a round of applause for a job well done. And we will start this off with our girls soccer coach from Norman North High School, Trevor Lethune.
The very select few that are here, get on up here. While they're coming up, I just want to say thank you again for having us. Again, I will tell you that this group of girls soccer in general, I mean, they play their whole lives. They play every day, you know, for us. A lot of these girls have played all year and so this is kind of their time away. And I believe in kind of a less is more approach sometimes, so I want them to have a little bit of a life. So the girls that are here, Parker McGraw, Kenzie Klaus, Brooklyn Wesley, Kinley Russ, Gabby Bedegrue, Lexi Kohler. Again, for us, we finished the season 16-1 in one. We finished top 13 in the country in one poll, top 15 in the country in another poll. Adara Ikba, late as usual. Again, we played Bixby in the state final. For those of you that know kind of the history of the program, we'd lost three in a row in the state final. So this group of seniors was in the state final every single year. So super proud of them, super proud of this group, obviously for us to get over the hump this time. And we had a fantastic season of the group of players. We had 22 players, 18 of those actually played in the state final. So we played 18 players in the state final. Most teams would play 14 or 15. But again, for us, the roster's super strong, I would say. We have eight girls going to play at the next level so far. Of those 22, only two seniors that are graduating are not going to go play. We have five girls going to play at the Power Four. Five girls going to play Division One Soccer, two going to play Division Three, one going to play Division Two. So super proud of them, couldn't be happier for them. So Norman North Girl Soccer. And Parker McGraw will stay up here. While everyone's walking away, Parker McGraw was one of our All-State selections. Her and Presley Boyd were both All-Conference players. Parker and Presley, they are both going to play at the University of Tulsa. Parker was COAC Defensive Player of the Year, someone that played every single minute all four years. Someone that is going to be very tough to replace. But again, super proud of Parker, can't wait to see what she does at Tulsa University. So Parker McGraw.
All right, up north, our head boys soccer coach Sage Moore.
Boys, if you'll join me up here. While they're walking up here, this is my first year as the head coach for Norman North. It was a great year. We finished 17-1. Obviously won the state championship beating Broken Arrow. It was a crazy game, went down 3-0 and had a great comeback. I'm very proud of the boys. Nationally, we finished third in the country, fourth in one poll, third in another poll. Probably should have won it if we didn't lose that game, but overall, great year. Very proud of the effort they put in and really turning around this program. This was our eighth state championship and we're tied now with the most in the state. So this is our 2025 men's soccer team. We have three All-State players this year, Miguel Madrigal, Zach Jennings, and Isaac Hudley. They're all on their senior trip right now, so they couldn't be here.
Yeah, get in here, Coach Moore. Okay, we will shift things over to Norman High School. And first up is our track and field individual state champion to be recognized by assistant coach and mom of this recipient. So a pretty cool moment for her, assistant coach Monica Boyd.
I am assistant, Coach Menard's not here, our head coach. So he emailed me some things he wanted said. So some of the things Bear has accomplished. He is a member of our school's record for the four-by-one relay and they were state runner-up in that. And he had a brother on that relay team with him, which was pretty fun. Tonight, he's being recognized as state champion in the 200 meters. He's a six-time state medalist in his NHS career and he was just named the Oklahoman's Big School All-City Track and Field Male Athlete of the Year. And he is our MVP this year also for track. So Menard's words here, "Our motto for NHS Track and Field is attitude and effort, two things that have nothing to do with talent. What we ask of our kids is to bring a positive attitude and give great effort each day at practice and in the classroom." Bear has maintained a 4.0 GPA all four years. He is also a model student in the classroom. He's been a great leader in our program and his attitude and effort are off the charts. Now, he didn't show up fast as a freshman. He had talent, attitude, and effort, but he demonstrated each day over his high school career and he has made himself fast in doing this. And then in his last race of his career, he won state. He's a winner in my eyes, period. He's a winner on the track, in the classroom, in life. And what excites me about Bear is that his best days and accomplishments are still ahead. Something I want to expand on real quick is he didn't just win, oh, the 200. He qualified for four events, which means that he had prelims in three of those. So he actually had to run seven races in two days, which was a really big deal with an injured hip. And so we're just super proud of him. I'm glad I got to coach him and I better walk off before it's so great.
All right, up next, Norman High School head boys soccer coach, Coach Drummond.
Would the Norman High Boys Soccer Team please come up? This year, the boys were the 2025 6A State Academic Champions with a combined GPA of 3.8. We had 12 boys who had a four-point, a truly impressive record, and a great bunch of young men. This is the 10th time that Norman High Boys have won the state academic championship. Marcus Balcom is our All-State player this year. And it's easy to tell a great deal about Marcus's career at Norman High. He lettered all four years. He started three years, one as a centerback, two as a midfielder. He was voted team contributor twice by his teammates. And as a senior, he was voted team captain and All-Stater. There's much to say about Marcus as a player, but one thing does stand out. If you've played soccer, you know that in practice, everybody wants to take a penalty kick. But when it comes to the game, it's hard to find folks who will step up. Well, Marcus stepped up four times this year to the spot and scored all four times. That takes courage, confidence, and composure, and that is Marcus Balcom. Congratulations.
All right, up next, our boys head golf coach, Norman High School, Greg Gross.
This year, the golf team had an excellent year, both in the classroom and on the course. And we had four gentlemen who are with us tonight. Guys, come on up. Four academic state champions in golf, you take your four, the five that started regionals. Our combined GPA for those five was four point. And in fact, if we'd have gone eight deep on the team, it was still four point. So we have Benson Dean, who'll be a senior next year, Keegan Hager, who will be a junior, Maverick Beeson, who, Maverick, will be a sophomore, and Grant Mayer, who will be a senior. So these guys played very, very well on the golf course. They won regionals. And while we didn't bring home two rings this year, everybody's back next year and we look forward to the opportunity to do it all again. So, thanks.
All right, last but certainly not least, our head slow pitch softball coach from Norman High School, Natasha Hillis.
Okay, I'm Natasha Hillis. I'm the head slow pitch coach at Norman High School. I'm here to talk about our All-Stater, Ally Jones. This year, Ally was selected as an All-Stater outfielder. Not only did she lead our team in batting average and fielding percentage, she is just an excellent role model for underclassmen, an excellent leader. She's the type of person that you want on your team, okay? The best teammate that you could ask for. I know those qualities will take her far in life and I'm blessed to being able to coach her for the past two years. And that's it. So congratulations, Ally.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Kristy Fisher to come up and help us recognize the Oklahoma Scholastic Esports.
Vice President Regiers, Members of the Board, and Ms. Nevels. This was the third year of the esports team at our two high schools. Our schools participated in the Oklahoma Scholastic Esports, or the OKSC League, along with over 250 other Oklahoma schools. There are over 12,000 students playing in the league. This program's designed for students who are passionate about competitive gaming and it seeks to foster teamwork, strategic thinking, and sportsmanship. Embracing the spirit of traditional athletics, esports provides a structured and engaging environment for students to develop their gaming skills, understand team dynamics, and gain knowledge of the esports industry. Jacob Gray has just completed his second year coaching the Norman North team and they continue to grow and had a very successful year in competition. Unfortunately, none of the students could be here tonight, but I wanted to recognize the Norman North team for their success this year. Next, I want to introduce Ian Patrick. He's in his first year coaching the esports team at Norman High. And they also had a very successful year and I'm going to have him introduce his students who are in attendance today.
Hi, first, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's allowed me to be able to come here. It's been an absolute blast playing games with them. I'm going to start with our fighting game. A little story about Jonas Stevens here is that there's this kid we have. He is fantastic and he does all of the Super Smash Brothers tryouts and he rates everybody on a scale of one to 10, everybody above a five because he's just that good. Jonas almost slipped through our Norman High School, but he made it to the last day and gave him a rating and said, "We need this kid." And so Jonas wasn't sure if he wanted to be here today because it was just so darn easy for him to qualify and win state championship rival. Player in the state. He took out several of his teammates, no remorse. And so I want to bring him up here to congratulate him, Jonas Stevens. All right, on to our Fortnite team. Unfortunately, we only have one of our team members able to make it today, but I'm really glad he made it. Zecharia James, want to come on up here, is a controller player, which I respect the heck out of because for those of you who play video games out there, there are PC players and there are controller players. players, and there are controller players, and PC players think that they're better. But Zecharia here plays with a PS5 controller, and just for that, he deserves a round of applause. He is a seriously good player, and I'm really glad that he's on the team, that he's going to be coming back this next year. We really think that we're going to be taking this away from Epic Charter Schools, so let's give it up.
Okay, Justin Milner, come on up. We want to hear more about the Energy Star certifications.
So Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Mrs. Nevilles, Sarah Chan joins me at the podium. Would like to take this opportunity to give you a little bit of background information. This is our first time receiving this recognition. So the Environmental Protection Agency Energy Star certification is a national recognition for energy efficiency for our buildings. We're pleased to have 14 of the 25 buildings submitted be recognized this evening. We expect the remaining buildings to be recognized over the next few years. So in addition to Sarah's work, I want to also recognize Senator Jess Dix, who's represented here this evening with Carrie and Jesse. And so we appreciate their support and assistance through this process. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President and members of the board. As the energy specialist for Norman Public Schools, I'm very excited to celebrate and recognize the efforts our staff have made to improve energy efficiency. And the things we do to meet those goals is we increase participation in energy setbacks, we've improved awareness about energy consumption and conservation, we have increased enhanced monitoring of our HVAC systems, and a coordinated and swift response by our maintenance department to mechanical issues. And all of those actions have led us to this moment tonight. And the moment is, 14 sites are receiving national recognition from the Environmental Protection Agency and receiving Energy Star certification, and that's an amazing accomplishment in just the first year and a half of our energy program. So cheers to that and all of that hard work. The Energy Star certification means that these sites are in the top 25% for energy efficiency when compared to buildings with original construction in the same year. And you're going to hear me call the year of the original construction when I call the people here to represent the buildings that are receiving certificates tonight. So at this time, each site will receive a certificate. They will also receive a window decal, but that is expected to arrive in August. And those decals will be displayed at the main entrance of every site, so that people visiting will know that we're really serious about conservation and energy efficiency, and know that we've received that national award. So when I call your name, please come forward to accept the certificate on behalf of your site, and please stay at the front until all buildings have been recognized. So I guess we recognize people in buildings in Norman. So first up is Eisenhower, built in 1973, and the principal, Daniel Eichel, is here tonight. Kennedy, 1975, and the principal, Amber Bowie, come on up. Lincoln, 1923, represented by their principal, Jessica Timms. Madison, built in 1960, and tonight, the principal, Hannah Stinton, and the energy coach, Patricia Morgan, are here. Reagan, built in 2013, and tonight, we have the principal, Tara White, and the energy coach, Lance Yates. Roosevelt, built in 1994, and tonight, we have the principal, Yasmin Hoover, and the assistant principal and energy coach, Lindsay Pickle. Truman Elementary, built in 1990, and tonight, represented by the energy coach, Melinda Willhite. Truman Primary, built in 2010, and tonight, we have the principal, Kristy Esslin. Also recognized tonight is Washington Elementary, built in 1989, but our representatives, do we have a representative? Come on up. The principal originally was going to be here, but she had to, she had another engagement. So what is her name? Tiffany Dixon. Sorry, Tiffany. Tiffany is here to accept Washington's certificate. Wilson Elementary, 1930, and tonight, we have the energy coach, Katie Frickenstein. Alcott Middle School, built in 1970, please welcome the principal, Tracy Kay, and the energy coach, Devon Ospan, to receive. Irving Middle School, built in 1974, and tonight, we have the energy coach, Branda Gilpin. And Dimensions Academy, built in 2006, and I'm going to brag a little more on Dimensions. They won all of the energy competition awards this year that the district has, including the energy setback and the EUI competition. They were just on top of it. And tonight, we have Linda Baxter Mace and Paula Trigastad. And last but not least, our Administrative Services Center, built in 1894, the original construction. And Justin's going to get up here with us and receive their certificate.
All right, we have a special agenda item. It is a resolution for Pride Month. Whereas the Norman Public Schools Board of Education is charged with the management and control of Norman Public Schools, and whereas Norman Public Schools is a diverse school system serving over 15,000 students in the third-largest city in Oklahoma, and whereas it is imperative Norman students and families, regardless of gender or sexual identity, feel valued, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders, and whereas the Board of Education prohibits bullying of any kind, and believes our students, faculty, and staff have the right to learn and work in a safe and nurturing environment that supports their social and emotional well-being, and whereas LGBTQ Pride Month is celebrated by communities, organizations, and institutions of learning nationally in the month of June, and whereas the Norman Public Schools' mission is to prepare and inspire all students to achieve their full potential, and the district holds inclusiveness as a core value, and whereas the Norman Public Schools is enriched by and thrives upon a prolific diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, ideological, gender, and sexual identities, all of which contribute to the quality of the educational experience in the district, and whereas this nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that include the ideas that every person has been created equal, that each has the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that each person shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of the law, and now therefore, let it be resolved that we, the members of the Norman Public Schools Board of Education, express our unwavering support of all Norman Public School students, faculty, staff, and families by proclaiming June 2025 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Do we have any public communications? No. Next on the agenda is the disposition of routine business by consent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent docket items A through N as listed on the agenda. Second.
Any discussion?
Alex Regiers? Alex Regiers?
Yes.
Annette Price?
Yes.
Don Brockman?
Yes.
Tori Collier?
Yes.
Is there any new business? I don't think so. Holly, Holly, is there an administrative staff report?
Yes, I do have an administrative staff report. Thank you, Mr. Regiers. And I do want to say hello from Dr. Millarino, although I think it's between 1:00 and 2:00 a.m. Where he is currently, he's out of the country, so I appreciate him giving me the opportunity to sit up here, as well as you all, for this meeting this evening. First of all, I want to thank our students who came in June to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those young ladies were representing not just themselves and their families, but all of our fifth graders throughout the district, who right this very minute are doing that turnover from elementary school to middle school. And we are so thankful that those young ladies could be here with us. Now, they have some very persuasive mamas, who are also leaders in our district as well. So I don't know if you could have said no, Brooklyn, but I'm glad you said yes, you and Marley and Mary Bell. So thank you for doing that for us this evening. I also want to acknowledge all of the amazing awards we had this evening. We have been on, I mean, the whole year has been a celebration, but the past month, we have been on a celebratory ride through the district as we went through May and culminating with our commencements at our high schools, but certainly even bleeding into June to be able to recognize our students' accomplishments. And we're thankful for their hard work, and for their families, and for all of our staff, who not only were recognized tonight, but poured into those students during their time in Norman Public Schools, their coaches that continue to do so. I also want to thank our foundation, our Norman Public Schools Foundation publicly. You all might be aware that Norman Regional Hospital is going through some challenges currently, and we have been in a longstanding partnership where they have been able to provide our nurses in our schools, which has been such a benefit to us. During this challenging time, they have had to pull back some of that funding. And I want to be really clear, they reduced that funding, they did not do away with it altogether. So still, even in challenging times, endeavoring to be a really good partner for us. But in the gap that that left, I want to say on behalf of all of us, a huge thank you to our Norman Public Schools Foundation for standing in the gap with $150,000 one-time donation contribution to ensure that we will still have nursing staff in our school sites for the 25-26 school year. And then it's incumbent upon us, and then we have some ideas for how we will close that gap after next school year. But public thank you to the Norman Public Schools Foundation for doing that for our students and also for our staff. In addition, I just want to do a few reminders. Our Norman Public School summer programs are off and running for our elementary, middle, and high school students. I am actually surprised to see Ms. McKinney in the room. I think she has been living in our summer programs for the majority of the past week and a half. I did actually get to talk to her this morning, and she said they are all going very, very well. Staff all in place, administrators all in place, still have some spots available if anybody would like to join. And we are also offering free meals, not only to our summer school students this summer, but to all students ages zero to 18 in Norman Public Schools. We have several school sites, all of that's available on our website. A few more in June because of our summer programs, but consistently, June, July, and August, availability for students to get meals if they need them. And enrollment is open, of course, for the 25-26 school year. So just a reminder, if you haven't enrolled, we welcome you to do that as we are gearing up for all things August. And that takes us to the last slide, which I think are just our upcoming events, and not lost on us that there are eight bullet points, and we're already talking August and first day of school. So we know that June matters, and everyone is very busy already preparing for August. We had an amazing principal and leadership retreat last week, where that was really one of our focuses, is it's time to reset, it's time to realign, but not to rest too long, because that August 13 date will be here before we know it, and we will excitedly welcome back our staff and certainly all of our students for next school year.
Thank you so much. Are there any Board of Education reports? Okay. Oh, all right.
I always like to talk. I just want to give a shout out to all of our district employees who are working this summer. Not everyone is off, there's a lot of work going on in this building, there's a lot of work going on at our different sites of educators and support staff who are getting ready for the new school year and in addition to the summer school programs. So I don't want to forget them, and I want to make sure that they know that they are appreciated.
Thank you. Any others?
I was just going to ditto that, that's exactly what I was going to say. As a new board member, learning about the STEAM camps and all the new things, I of course knew about ESY and summer school, but to know and learn how busy MPS staff is and everyone that's helping to serve the students, I just want to give a thanks for that.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn. Second.
Alex Regiers?
Yes.
Annette Price?
Yes.
Don Brockman?
Yes.
Tori Collier?
Yes.
We are adjourned?